Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority for April 11th, 2022. Just before we do that, Councilman Derrick Reed will come with the invocation followed by the flag salute. Let us stand.
Shall we pray? Dear Lord, it is once again we come thanking you for the gift of another day. Thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon each and every one of us within this day. Just bless our community as we go into the Easter season that we not forget to remember the sacrifice you made for all of our sins. Just ask that you would just look upon the city leaders tonight as we come together in all that we do, Lord, let it be in your will and in your way. Bless us and keep us in your care is our prayer. Amen.
Amen. Let us look to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Here.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here. Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of March the 14th, 2022, and special call MMA minutes of April 4th, 2022, or take other necessary action.
We have had time hopefully to review the minutes for the March 14th, 22 meeting, as well as the special call meeting for April 4th, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes or any modifications as necessary?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the minutes are approved. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending March 31st, 2022, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the trust. This is our claims list for the month ending March 31st. As you can see, there has been $750,283.38 transferred from MMA to the city for reimbursement. $195,018.60 was retained for capital improvements, and $208,535.05 was used to support debt service for some of the loans that MMA has. Happy to answer any questions. With that, I recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Do we have any discussion or questions on item number two or a motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Any further discussions? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number two passes. We will adjourn that meeting and now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for April 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
We will now consider approval of the minutes for the special call City Council for March 21st, 2020, City Council regular session, March 28th, 2022, excuse me. Special call City Council, April 4th, 2022, take unnecessary action. Do we have a motion on those minutes or any discussion regarding corrections?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve those minutes as read. Any further discussions? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, those minutes are approved. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items numbers one through four. Are there any items from the consent agenda that a councilor wishes to move to the regular agenda, or can we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move for approval.
Second.
The consent agenda has a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number five passes. We will adjourn that meeting and now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for April 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number two passes. We will adjourn that meeting and now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for April 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number two passes. We will adjourn that meeting and now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for April 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the minutes are approved. Item number two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending March 31st, 2022, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the trust. This is our claims list for the month ending March 31st. As you can see, there has been $750,283.38 transferred from MMA to the city for reimbursement. $195,018.60 was retained for capital improvements, and $208,535.05 was used to support debt service for some of the loans that MMA has. Happy to answer any questions. With that, I recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Do we have any discussion or questions on item number two or a motion to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. Any further discussions? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number two passes. We will adjourn that meeting and now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for April 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number two passes. We will adjourn that meeting and now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for April 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number two passes. We will adjourn that meeting and now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for April 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number two passes. We will adjourn that meeting and now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee City Council for April 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, those minutes are approved. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items numbers one through four. Are there any items from the consent agenda that a councilor wishes to move to the regular agenda, or can we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move for approval.
Second.
The consent agenda has a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number five.
Consider approval of resolution number 2894, authorizing certain modifications to the medical plan benefits under the City of Muskogee Employee Benefit Plan, providing and directing said modifications be incorporated into the plan documents, summary plan descriptions, and benefit summary sheets, as well as approval of resolution number 2895, approving and authorizing execution of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Benefit Program application and required addendums, PBM termination letter, Blue Cross Blue Shield exhibit to the stop-loss coverage policy, prime therapeutics required documents, and all other required documents all to become effective May 1st, 2022, and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all necessary documents for renewal and implementation purposes, or take other necessary action.
Ms. Eaton.
Mayor, council members, over the last couple of weeks, discussion has been held, but I believe the determination of the council has been to move forward with the dual option that was originally presented, and this increases the rates by 10%, keeping the benefit levels the same on the buy-up plan. And then another option is the one that keeps rates as currently are, but increases out-of-pocket max, such as deductibles and copays, and it gives the employees that option. But the wish of council is what will be implemented. We do need to get moving on this. Open enrollment is scheduled for next week, and May 1st is the effective date. And I recommend approval of whatever you wish.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton. Do we have any conversation from the council?
May I be recognized?
Dr. Hoos.
So, over the last three weeks, I've met with you and Ms. Sweets to kind of go over some of the ARPA money and even just the budget, seeing if we can offset this cost for the dependent coverage, and unfortunately, there is no solution that we could really find that would work at this time with the ARPA funds that were committed and plus unexpected rising costs in city utilities, you know, gas, different things due to inflation. There just was not an easy solution to meet this time, but it's something that before we do our budget next year, we can sit down and probably readdress this again. I think that Ms. Sweets brought some ideas about potential ways that we could offset this with our employees once we get to that point, but also some things I've found out is that we really never have shopped around. We've kind of used the same broker and stuff, so I think I recommend going forward when we start to look in on insurance coverage that we, you know, there's other brokers out there that we need to look. Right now, we bring a broker in that's not from this town, not from this community, so I'd like to open it up to some of the local brokers also. And this moving forward with the two plan options, the insurance came up, is basically getting us the best rates possible to keep the coverage that employee has where it's at. Unfortunately, we couldn't find much to offset on the dependent coverage, but it looks like if it's going to be dependent, it'd be $40 more a month. But another thing that I don't think that we were aware of that I didn't find out until today, and I'm not in, this is not Ms. Eaton's fault at all, but we weren't told that the rise for retirees is up to 20% on this also. Is that correct?
Maggie, Maggie has presented a spreadsheet that I have passed around to you all. If you would take a look at that, Maggie, you've got your copy, if you don't mind to go through it and kind of talk about what we're looking at. And this is one that Ms. Eaton did as it relates to retirees.
So, at the bottom, it shows what the rate increase per month would be for retirees, and then if you see the line, it says increase per month for each group. The first row there is what it'll cost for employees per month for their dependents for that tier, and then the second, or second from the bottom line, that's what it'll cost retirees for each tier there per month. So, you can see the difference between the two.
So, on the retiree, single retiree, it's about, well, nobody's exactly 10%.
Yes.
All right? From 70302 to 77332?
Yes, it's a difference of $70.30.
Okay. And then the increase on the employee plus spouse is about $105.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I, so, when you and I spoke, it was actually a 10% across the board increase, but then there was some confusion of how we got to 20%. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I think it was miscommunication between myself and the broker.
Okay.
So, I mean, the retiree pays what the city normally pays, so it is more of an impact on the retiree, but...
And that was because it was 10% going to go to the employee and then 10% on the dependent, which is how we originally arrived at the 20%, but it's actually...
Correct.
10%.
Correct.
And so, this sheet that Ms. Eaton has prepared does show you what the impact for the different groups, including the retiree only, if they have a spouse, with children, and with family coverage.
So, we got some stuff we need to look at when we do the budgets coming up, because if not, it's going to keep going up and up and up. And I mean, this is something we're all feeling, I'm feeling it, you know, and I think that we need to look at this as with our benefits and, you know, their families' independent coverage. I'm grateful that the city was able to kind of come up with a way to not raise increase for employees themselves, because when you look at it, that was a pretty big jump also. So, I think right now, this is our best option, but we just do need to address this come June and July.
Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the total deficit on this? Do you know?
Do you know what the current plan balance is?
You mean the balance of the...
You mean the balance of the health fund right now?
What we're going to be short?
Um...
If you need to find that out, please.
I will, yes, I will find out.
Thank you.
Let me remind the audience that is watching, Ms. Eaton is brand new to her position, and she inherited this conversation that was passed down, and so she is taking her time to answer the questions, that's why I'm tonight. Any further discussions from the council, or do we have a recommendation?
I think at this time, we need to move for approval to, as the insurance committee has recommended.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number six passes. Item number seven.
Consider approval of payment in the amount of $500,000 to the Muskogee City County Port Authority for a CIP drawdown invoice, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
You can move the microphone up.
The Port of Muskogee has submitted the invoice for the drawdown. If you have in front of you Resolution 2747, that includes the Economic Development Funds for to match Port of Muskogee's 2018 Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development Transportation Grant Rail Modernization Project. They have completed their requirements and have sought the drawdown of the full $500,000.
You recommend approval?
Recommend approval, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any further discussion from the council?
Yes, Madam, can I be recognized on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain what that is?
As far as the Port of Muskogee's project or the...
Yeah, but $500,000, what is that for?
There was a, in the CIP that was passed by the voters, the build, supporting build project was one of the aspects to it, and it was to be used as a match for governmental funding from the federal government in order to do that rails project that they're working on. Now, we don't have the details of that project on hand with us right now, but we can certainly get you those as well.
Please, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Any further questions, or do we have a recommendation on how to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second on item number seven. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number seven passes. Item number eight.
Consider approval to apply for, and if selected, accept the 2022 Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act Peer Support Implementation Project grant through the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, in the maximum amount of $175,000, or take other necessary action.
Deputy Chief Farmer.
Mayor, Council, this is a continuation of a grant that we received in 2020, the same exact grant. We had, we approved, we got it approved and spent about $121,000 in the last two years. Wanted to tell you exactly kind of what that did. So, this provides for yearly mental health screenings for all officers, some PTSD awareness training, some burnout prevention training, spousal support groups. It expanded our peer support team from seven to 14 members that were all certified in critical incident stress management. There's a spouse and officer mentorship program that we've never had in the past, and one of the biggest things is this pays for counseling for officers and their wives, and currently to date, we've had 27 officers and their families, told them about 200 sessions that have actually got a licensed counselor that they've been to, which is about $20,000 that it saved the city. So, also, a pretty significant number. Before we started, after we did the mental health and wellness assessments with the officers, we were about a 31% number on officers that were diagnosed with PTSD, and as of September of 2021, we're down to 4%. So, it's clearly working, what we're doing. So, this was the new version of that grant for 2022. It's up to $175,000, so that doesn't mean we're going to get all of it, but that's the max that we can get. So, we recommend approval and I'll happy to answer any questions if you got some.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Farmer. Do we have any questions regarding item number eight, or how do we like to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second on item number eight. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derrick Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, item number seven passes. Item number eight.
Consider approval to apply for, and if selected, accept the 2022 Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act Peer Support Implementation Project grant through the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, in the maximum amount of $175,000, or take other necessary action.
Deputy Chief Farmer.
Mayor, Council, this is a continuation of a grant that we received in 2020, the same exact grant. We had, we approved, we got it approved and spent about $121,000 in the last two years. Wanted to tell you exactly kind of what that did. So, this provides for yearly mental health screenings for all officers, some PTSD awareness training, some burnout prevention training, spousal support groups. It expanded our peer support team from seven to 14 members that were all certified in critical incident stress management. There's a spouse and officer mentorship program that we've never had in the past, and one of the biggest things is this pays for counseling for officers and their wives, and currently to date, we've had 27 officers and their families, told them about 200 sessions that have actually got a licensed counselor that they've been to, which is about $20,000 that it saved the city. So, also, a pretty significant number. Before we started, after we did the mental health and wellness assessments with the officers, we were about a 31% number on officers that were diagnosed with PTSD, and as of September of 2021, we're down to 4%. So, it's clearly working, what we're doing. So, this was the new version of that grant for 2022. It's up to $175,000, so that doesn't mean we're going to get all of it, but that's the max that we can get. So, we recommend approval and I'll happy to answer any questions if you got some.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Farmer. Do we have any questions regarding item number eight, or how do we like to proceed?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second on item number eight.[746.75]
...tracks in downtown Muskogee.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Tucker, do we take that as direction of staff or do we need a motion?
Uh, we can take that as direction of staff. And so what we'll do, Councilor Reynolds, is research and report back on what the criteria that are required to establish a quiet zone within the downtown corridor. For purposes of how far we want to go, do you have any idea where the...
Roy, it has to be a half mile.
Okay.
So we need to encompass a half mile in it. And keep in mind when you're studying that, just keep aware that there's another track over uh, off of K Street. That does have a lot of residential's in it too. So if we're gonna look at it, we might want to expand that and just see what it takes.
And the...
And around what?
I'm not necessarily saying let's get rid of the horn altogether. It's just the required three long blasts. Um, even if they're just creeping along, pulling up enough to put another train, you know, another car in, they have to blow it three times and it... Where I sit there on the tracks, it can become a little annoying. So anyway, if we would look into that, I would sure appreciate it.
And Public Works will take that task.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Further discussion? Item number 10.
Discuss and take action regarding a possible city council resource center in City Hall.
Mr. Reynolds.
Um, this is also my agenda item. Um, I would just like to start a conversation about a resource center and possible help. We really don't have anywhere inside the city that councillors can come, uh, have access to a phone and a computer, copy a machine, things of that nature without taking advantage of someone's office space. And it would be really nice if we had the ability to come over and work, a place to come over and meet with our constituents. Um, I do have a, a business downtown, um, and I certainly don't mind seeing my constituents there, but if they come in during lunch or dinner, I will probably be unable to sit down and help them. I'd like to have some office hours. I could come in. I'm sure the rest of the staff would, or the rest of the council would also. And then the, uh, we're also busy in our daily lives. The, uh, uh, agenda items and things that each councillor is passionate about, as well as the things in their district that they need to take care of. Uh, we really need someone other than just the... Everyone that we work with is extremely busy, but it would be nice if we had someone that we could talk to about helping us craft our agenda items. Uh, it's, it's important that we, you know, follow the procedures proper, uh, let them know, share with someone what we want on the agenda and have them help us craft that. Cause a lot of times we're, we're too busy to get those things done properly and get them done in a timely fashion. And it would be nice if we had a little bit of help for that. So, once again, I'm not asking for any, uh, action. I'm just, would like to start a, a conversation for that, so we could possibly put together some resources that we could work together in.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Tucker, can we also take that as direction of staff?
Yes, sir. We certainly can.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you. We have one resident having signed to speak us tonight, uh, Mr. Mark Hughes. If you've come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, uh, you will have three minutes. And let me be clear, uh, one resident signed to speak up to this agenda. We have other agendas to cover tonight as well.
I have two hanging out, man. Pass him out for...
Mr. Tucker?
I'm sorry?
I have two hanging out, but...
Yeah. I'm gonna shake.
Mark Hughes, 907 Nelson... Mark, we, we won't start your time, so everybody has their copies that you pass out, please. Thank you. We all have our copies. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Give us your name and your address. You'll have three minutes.
Mark Hughes, 907 Nelson Drive, Muskogee, Oklahoma. Your, your thick packet is a, a letter from David Anderson, the Vaughn plaintiff's attorney in inverse combination case was given to Roy Tucker some time ago and explains why the city's not gonna win the case and the consequences of if they do not win the case, what's gonna happen. It's just gonna be more of the same thing costing the city more. The second handout is a spreadsheet on how much the city is accumulating in, in interest on all four inverse combination cases. Uh, Vaughn, Taft, England, and Lacy. Vaughn's commissioners award was 1.92 million. England was 716,000. Taft's was 1,93,000. Lacy was 3,470,000. For a total of $7,199. All the city had to do was stop the interest that the Judge Golden, uh, ruled against the city at 10.25 percent was to put all that money in an interest-bearing account and all the interest would have stopped right then. But the city didn't do that. So, right now, they're paying interest, uh, per month on Mr. Vaughn of over $89,000. England over six, $6 million. Taft over $5 million. Lacy over $3 million. So total interest for all four cases per month, if the city loses, is $1,295,649.79. That's per month. If you make that on an annual basis, the city's gonna have to pay 15 million, 545,637 dollars. So what I'm saying, the city has a 50/50 chance of losing and a 50/50 chance of winning. For 15 years, the city has bet for winning. And by doing that, uh, they now owe, uh, $1,295,000 per month. I strongly ask that the city council put the $7,199,000 in the interest-bearing account and stop the accumulation of interest. Because the only people gonna pay for it are the taxpayers, the property taxpayers of the city of Muskogee. Not the county, just the city. You are a fiduciary responsibility to take care of the money of our city which is produced by our taxpayers. Please do so. Please put that $7 million in the interest-bearing account and stop the accumulation of $1,295,649 per month that's gonna come out of the taxpayer's pocket through raising of property taxes or a bond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We have no other residents signed to speak to us tonight, but let me remind us before we go into item number 11 that on this Friday at 1 o'clock PM, on the corner of Second and Court, we will have the official street naming ceremony for Dr. Robert Smith. Uh, he was a physician, Tuskegee Airmen, uh, and his family owns the Booker T. Washington Cemetery here in the city of Muskogee. Friday, 1 PM, the corner of Second and Court for the official street naming ceremony. The entire public is invited to attend. Item number 11.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Brandon Simmons and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Jerome Beasley and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C pursuant to Section 307b1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluate the performance of city manager Mike Miller and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D pursuant to Section 307b1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluate the performance of city attorney Roy D. Tucker and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C pursuant to Section 307b1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluate the performance of city clerk Tammy L. Tracy and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds? Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, we will now convene into executive session. We will ask that all of you excuse yourself from the room at this time unless you are party to one of the agenda items. Thank you. We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Here.
Ivory Van?
Here.
Jamie Stout?
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Here.
Alex Reynolds?
Here.
Stephanie Morgan?
Here.
Tracy McGee?
Here.
Tracy Whoos?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 11A pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes. The city council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Brandon Simmons. After being briefed on the status of that claim, I believe an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Brandon Simmons within the terms discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number A. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
11, item B pursuant to Section 307b4 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes. The council convened an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Jerome Beasley. After being briefed on the status of that claim, an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of Mr. Beasley within the terms discussed in executive session.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number B. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, item B passes. Mr. Tucker?
Uh, item C pursuant to Section 307b1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes. The council convened an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluated, and to evaluate the performance of city manager Mike Miller. Uh, as the council knows, this item was a continuation of several items that have preceded it. Uh, and, uh, the evaluation was concluded at this point, and I think an appropriate motion would be to authorize an amendment to Mr. Miller's employment contract, which raises his takeaway accrual maximum from 250 hours of sick leave to 400 hours of sick leave.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item C. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, item C passes. Mr. Tucker?
Item D pursuant to Section 307b1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes. The council did convene an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluate the performance of city attorney Roy Tucker. Uh, as discussed earlier, this was a continuation of several previous agenda items. Uh, the concl- the evaluation of Mr. Tucker was concluded and no actions necessary at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Uh, item E.
Pursuant to Section 307b1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes. The council did convene an executive session to discuss the employment and evaluate the performance of city clerk Tammy L. Tracy. As said previous times, this was a continued item from previous discussions regarding, uh, her, uh, Ms. Tracy's evaluation. Uh, based on the discussion, an appropriate motion would be to authorize an amendment to Ms. Tracy's contract increasing her vacation accruals, uh, an additional 40 hours per year.
Do we have a motion on item number E?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item E. Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds? Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, item E passes. That will conclude that meeting. We will now call to order the special call meeting for the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority for April 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Here.
Ivory Van?
Here.
Jamie Stout?
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Here.
Alex Reynolds?
Here.
Stephanie Morgan?
Here.
Tracy McGee?
Here.
Tracy Whoos?
Here.
Item number one.
Consider approval of special call MRA minutes of March 30th, 2022, or take other necessary action.
We have the minutes before us for the special call meeting for the MRA for March 30th, 2022. Do we have any corrections to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number one. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, the item passes. Mr. Tucker, we have three, uh, residents signed up to speak to item number two. Will we have Ms. Tracy read the entire item or do we proceed with the, uh, those who wish to speak?
Have her read the item and then, uh, invite those up to speak.
Ms. Ta- Ms. Tracy?
Consider an executive session to discuss and take appropriate action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307b1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to continue the 90-day performance evaluation of Economic Development Director Leon Davis in accordance with the agreement between the city of Muskogee and the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, as well as engage in discussion regarding Davis's employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, resignation, or termination, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section 307b1 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the appointment of an interim general manager, including terms and conditions of employment, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
We have two, uh, residents signed to speak up tonight. Three, rather. Uh, the first is Melody Cranford. I'm gonna ask that you come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you will have five minutes.
Good evening. Melody Cranford, 1102 Meadow Lane Drive, Muskogee, Oklahoma. I am the education chair for the NAACP. Our mission, um, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for giving us this opportunity. Our mission is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of all citizens. As the education chair, I'm working with the citizens of the city of Muskogee to, uh, learn how to fill out applications, um, resumes, as well as interview skills for potential jobs that we heard during our council run. I ran for city council myself. We heard of employment opportunities on the city side and we are, um, working with our citizens to develop these opportunities. It is my goal, or our goal, those in the audience tonight that I'm speaking on behalf of, that we get an opportunity for these citizens to work with our economic director, Mr. Leon Davis, in the continuance of his role as is and be able to bring, for him to be able to bring economic development to our black and brown community that suffer from low socioeconomic statuses that keep them in the cycle of intergenerational poverty. These citizens want to keep believing that when you say the city of Muskogee is a place where we can live, work, and play, you're talking about all people, including black and brown people, which we don't see at the current moment. And with the movement that we are seeing taking place with, um, our economic development director, we don't see that coming to our community anytime soon. Mr. Davis has the potential to reignite that hope that, um, we have heard about and that we have preached to our community on your behalf as leaders by simply being able to meet with us and hear our hopes and dreams for a better Muskogee, especially in wards where economic development is much needed, like my ward, Ward 3. To Mayor Coleman specifically, I read your post today on Facebook and you talked so much about walking alone. I want you to know that as a leader of the community, you are not walking alone. The council is not walking alone. You have leaders that are wanting to reach across the aisle and work with you. We are asking that you reach back and work with us, not just in these meetings like this, but in our community. We are inviting you to our forums. We're inviting you to our churches. We're inviting you to places where you can work with us and not speak at us and we just listen, but we want to have dialogue where you speak, we speak, you speak, we speak, and then we come to a conclusion. Um, as we celebrate Holy Week, I've heard you make mention of again on Facebook. Most of us in the, in the, the session today are also Christians, many of them pastors in unions with you. And we want you to understand that we understand what Christianity is all about. You spoke a few weeks ago about the council being a council where you wanted young, invigorating people who may want to be a part of the council to see that the council is happy and the council takes care of its own. So I'm gonna ask you, as a Christian, do you kick a man when he's down? Because this Holy Week, our churches are interceding for Mr. Leon Davis and his wife who has brain cancer. We are also interceding for Mike Miller and his daughter who have suffered traumatic experiences. We are lending our faith to you as a community and we're asking you tonight to, first of all, accept our help. As leaders in your community, accept the help from the leaders. We don't have to sit on council. I lost to Councilman Van, but we are working so hard together in Ward 3 because what I said, I meant. And I love my community and I'm asking you to love me back. By allowing our economic development director at least an opportunity to get the things that he's asked for from you before you make a decision on how he's fulfilling his duties. He's asked for staff. He's asked for financing. He's asked for other things. Give him those things and then if he doesn't meet the requirements of the city, by all means, do whatever it is necessary. But as an educator, I don't pass out tests without pencils and then pick them up and grade them. Because I know that I have not given my students what they needed to be successful, to even have an opportunity to pass the test or me see what they know or don't know. So I'm asking you tonight on behalf of the citizens of Ward 3, the NAACP, to please allow Mr. Leon Davis to do what you hired him to do and then if he doesn't do that, do what you need to do. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from Ms. Cranford on tonight?
I'm sorry, Mayor. This is, can be no...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Uh, the Reverend Dr. Roger Cutler, uh, had wished to speak tonight and had not signed up. I'm gonna make a motion that we give him five minutes to make his presentation.
Second.
Roll call.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, Pastor Cutler, if you come to the microphone, give us your name and your address. You'll have five minutes.
Uh, Mr. Cutler, one second. Uh, Mayor, one correction. Uh, Ms. Tracy corrected me. This is an agenda item, so there can be questions on it. So you'll have five minutes to speak, five minutes for questions.
Before you speak, Mr. Tucker, did we have any questions from Ms. Cranford from the council? Thank you. Mr. Tucker, pastor rather, if you, uh, uh, Cutler, if you give us your name and your address, you'll have five minutes.
Pastor Cutler, 1602 Hayes Street here in the great city of Muskogee. Thank you, council, for hearing us tonight and thank you, Mayor, for extending the courtesy. I rise on behalf of not only the NAACP, but the black and brown citizens of Muskogee. And I rise with one simple question tonight. When will the black and brown community of this city receive your attention? When? You constantly come into our churches. You come into our meetings. You tell us soon it's on the way. We're working on it. How long must we continue to be put on the back burner? How long? How long must we continue to be passed over for the haves because some have not? How long? How long must we believe in a campaign of hope that hasn't left the ground and is standing on sinking sand? Hope this, hope that. How long must our hope be deferred that the hope of the haves and special interest groups are looked at while we're looked over? Does the black and brown community of this city deserve economic development? For the Christians sitting on the council, as we prepare to celebrate Holy Week, Jesus said, "As you do unto the least of these, my brethren, you also done it unto me." Your promises, your commitments of bringing development, Mayor, into the south side of town as you stood at Hero Park, was that just an empty campaign promise to get our votes at the poll? We don't need empty promises. We don't need biscuits. We don't need Band-Aids and we certainly don't need brisket sandwiches. What we need in our community is economic development. Does the black and brown in south side of town not deserve economic development? You hire Mr. Leon Davis to bring economic development into our city, yet you don't give him what he needs to fulfill his job. Instead, we play to those special interest groups who have stood at this very mic and have told you what you're going to do, and I stood and watched you do it. Does the black and brown community not deserve economic development? How can you hire a man, not give him what we, he needs? As we watched him and witnessed the fact that he helped to revitalize North Tulsa, he helped to do that. We have him here. We've not given him the tools to help him to fulfill his role. You want to fire him. Who are you working for? Your own interest or the interest of all of the community? And as I close tonight, the Bible teaches us that what is done in the dark will come to the light. And I hope that when the light comes on, that you're on the right side of the light. Because we will be watching and we will continue to vote. And so I bid you good night.
Thank you, Reverend Cutler. Do we have any questions from the council for Reverend Cutler? Thank you, Pastor Cutler. Uh, I was the last person signed up to speak to this item on tonight. Uh, Marlon Coleman, uh, 500 West Broadway, Muskogee, Oklahoma. The worst threat to our democracy beyond communism is the flagrant dissemination of misinformation. There are no winners when people publicly speak fallacies or mistruth based on bad information. Martin Luther King Jr. said that unarm truth and unconditional love will have the final word in reality. The truth never needs to be armed with personal viewpoints or personal perceptions for it to be the truth. Truth that needs assistance to be truth is not truth at all. Creative substance is an oxymoron. When we add creative writing or commentary to the truth, it is no longer the truth, but soap opera drama for public spectacle. Truth. In 2020, I was elected the first black mayor of the city of Muskogee. This was a historic moment for all people in Muskogee. I was elected at the height of George Floyd. So if there was ever a time for our community to be distrustful of leadership because of race, it was at that time. But Muskogee looked beyond the racial tension of the time and elected me because they believed in the power of hope. And hope looks beyond race and works towards bringing us together across racial boundaries. I will never be in denial about who I am as a black man, but I know that as I sit in this seat, my calling is to all people, all the time, regardless of race. Truth. It is a sad day when people of an underrepresented group will rally and scheme to attack their own and history and slaughter them with misinformation. Rather than use misinformation as fuel to energize a divisive movement, be fueled by facts instead of perception and use the truth as a guide to overcoming the ugliness of race-baiting as a means to an end. I am terrified as I sit here tonight of ego hustlers, grandstanders, and social media keyboard ninjas who deliberately use misinformation to rile people into a frenzy for their own selfish ambitions. If we allow ourselves to be divided by race, we will continue to stumble into the abyss of irrelevance. Taking advantage of people by feeding them mistruths is wrong and helps all of us in the process. Dr. King's closing statement of his life and purpose was a paradox. He wanted to see us all get to the promised land of racial equality, civil justice for all, and unity among the races. But in the frustration and taxation that the civil rights movement had on him and his own family, he acknowledged the possibility of a brighter future in America that might not allow him to see it in his lifetime. At this point in my life, I'm 50 and I don't know what God has left for me to do. But when the lightning flashes and the thunder rolls and sins-breaker's dash attempt to conquer my soul, I still hear the voice of Jesus through all of the noise, through all the false accusations, through all of the ridicule, through all of the uninvited meetings where characters have been slandered without giving the person the opportunity to defend themselves. I hear Jesus saying, "Fight for this city," championing on for future generations, to stand as an open target, risking life, family, as well as reputation, to be in the way for those who use hate as... those who use hate as a weapon. Why would I make that sacrifice? Because I believe in Muskogee. I'll die for Muskogee, whether they're brown, blue, red, yellow, or other, because Muskogee will always be too big for small dreams. God bless America and that's more than a biscuit or a brisket or a biscuit in a go box. Make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, I'm going to ask that all of us will excuse ourselves from the session at this time except for the body's attorney. We will now reconvene from executive session. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Jamie Stout.
Here.